Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 20th, 2023. Would you all please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one community under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, and welcome to everybody. It's June 20th, 2023, for the Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting. We just finished up a workshop. We're going to convene the board, and Commissioner Ulrich will be attending remotely today and available at a predetermined and disclosed location of 33332 West Point Road, Deer River, Minnesota, 56636. So if you want to join him, he'll probably bring some doughnuts and coffee for you. So with that, we're going to go to a legislative report from Representative Brad Tapke, who represents Shakopee and, I think, some other little areas, correct? A little part of Jackson. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. How are you doing?
Doing fine about you.
I'm doing great. Thank you. Great to do this first thing this week. But thank you very much for having me, Brad Tapke, State Representative from Shakopee, representing District 54A, which, as you said, is the majority of Shakopee. I don't have Dean Lake's area, and then also I have some of Jackson Township. And so I'm in that area. Representative Baigberg is the B-side, and so he has Prior Lake Savage. And I believe that he'll be coming as well at some point to do what I thought we were going to do today together, but some scheduling got messed up on that. So with that, I just wanted to say hi and ask, see if you guys have any questions about the legislative session, and just report back a little bit about what we did and what happened. And so this session, as everyone knows, we had a very large surplus, and it was $17.5 billion surplus. The vast majority of that surplus was one-time money, so it's just money that can be spent one time and is not ongoing into the future. And then we had about $3, $4 billion that was ongoing money. And so we used that to invest in future of Minnesota. And so we had our goal with the, in the House especially, was to push for generational change so that we have this session, the 2023 session, has benefits for well into the future. So our kids, as kids, as kids, will benefit from this. So we invested in education, healthcare, mental health, public safety, and a lot of different things. And I brought along the Scott County 2023 legislative priorities, just to talk a little bit about those major priorities that Scott County had. And it was a pleasure to work with, saw pretty much everybody throughout the legislative session at one point or another. So thank you very much for being engaged in the process. Also, a shout out for Perry. Perry McCrone did an amazing job representing Scott County at the legislature and doing and making sure that we knew exactly what was going on and where things needed to be. And so with that, I was on the, I'm on, currently on the Public Safety Committee, as well as Vice Chair of Transportation Committee, Ad Committee, and Commerce Committee. So a lot of those things hit where we work with Scott County. And the first item on your budget priorities for the session was support state updating the funding model and formula for the Community Corrections Act. And so we were able to do that this session. So we got the funding formula switched over and got that to where we wanted. There was not, I think it was an $80 million request for how much money we needed to put into there, and we ended up around 45, if I recall correctly, as to where that was at. And more work to be done on that as it goes into the future. And then support, the next item was support an increase in deputy registrar fees, and we did that in the transportation bills. So we, between the House and the Senate transportation bills, the Senate had significantly higher increases in fees in order to support deputy registrars. And we took that language from the Senate bill. And so that increased there. It doesn't get deputy registrars perfect as to where everybody wants to be, but we also funded a study for, then come back to us next year, on deputy registrars and how we, as a state, because with the new binocular system, there's a lot of weird interactions between deputy registrars and the state that doesn't fund things correctly and doesn't make sure. So we're doing a study on that to see where that needs to be on that piece into the future. And so the next one was support legislative language streamlining and reducing reporting child protection requirements. And this, we got a lot done. This is not in a world that I do anything with, so I'm not much in the child protection and health and that world. And so I was told that we got some good work done here, but exactly what we got done, I'm not 100% sure, so don't ask me any questions on that one. And then support legislation to increase the number of beds to address the 48-hour hold rule issue and develop Minnesota's mental health continuum. And so we put hundreds of millions of dollars into mental health, and that push on mental health as that goes forward and the work that we want to do to make sure that mental health is a priority in the state of Minnesota and make sure that we have beds available and work in there. The 48-hour rule was one of the, my most, I think, disappointing laws that we had. I, we didn't get done what we wanted to get done and worked really hard to get there. The chair went with the language on the 48-hour rule from the department. And so we'll, we have a study, not a study, we have a task force that's coming up this summer that I'll be very involved with and making sure that we are looking at what we need to do with the 48-hour rule and pushing forward not only Scott County's priorities, but also priorities that people need to be taken care of. We can't just leave people rotting in jail that have mental health issues and from there. So I just wanted to give a quick update. I know you guys have a big agenda today, but also available to answer any questions. I'm super happy that we can't hear Commissioner Ulrich today, so that's always a plus.
Representative Tapke, who else is on that 48-hour, that panel?
Yeah, so I'm not on the panel. We don't have any legislators actually on the panel. This is all county attorneys, county sheriffs.
I see.
And the associations and Minnesota, Association of Minnesota Counties is involved with that. So I, so I am not personally, we didn't put legislators.
Kind of active watching it, I see.
Yeah, exactly. And making sure that we know what needs to happen going forward and that I can advocate against the department's position.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh...
Oh, Commissioner Ulrich to talk.
Ulrich can go.
Oh, Commissioner Ulrich.
Representative Tapke, you had some successes. I don't think you referred to, I think you missed it, but Marion Junction Trail and 169 212 and the dead patch, April 1st. You want to say some things about those?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Did you hear him?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I was just waiting for you. I was trying to be polite.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
So Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ulrich. So yes, thank you for bringing those up. We got funding for Marion Junction Trails. We got $4 million for that piece. We also funded in the transportation bill, which we were really active on. I believe it's 11.2 million. It fully funds the 282-169 interchange in Jordan. And so worked really closely with Representative Baigberg, Senator Pratt on that issue as well. So that was really good to have those pieces done. We also got for bonding, it's not a Scott County priority, but for Shakopee, we got eight point something, I forget exactly what the number is, but over $8 million for the shore stabilization on the Minnesota River through downtown Shakopee. We're starting to impact the sewers and utilities through there, so that's really good. There's also some money for the Eden Prairie side so that we can make sure that we're doing both sides of the river at that point. And so it's, it's really, really a great collaborative effort in order to get that for what we, we need to get done. And so we've got some more things on the list for the 2024 session that we want to get done as well. So I'm looking at down here at Commissioner Ulrich on the screen like he's, he can see me, but...
When is that river stabiliz, when is that going to take place, do you think?
The Marion Junction one has river stabilization as well, and so that is going to be let this fall. Is that still accurate?
Okay.
Yeah, there's a piece of the river stabilization that'll go late this fall, early winter, yes.
Okay.
And then I believe the Shakopee side, I'm not 100% sure exactly when that one is going, but I believe it's a spring project. Mr. Kirske is back here, and so he was nodding. So yes, I believe that's a spring starting project.
I was just going to say, if you're going to work on the river, it'd be a good time now because it's dry.
Exactly.
I know. Wait, what? I thought you were going to put your shovel out there.
Sometimes. It depends on the day.
Okay, any other questions or, you have any more for us?
Well, we interrupted.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Representative Tapke, thanks for being here. I think it's important. Thanks for, we cite each other a lot at the Capitol, so thanks for always being available and listening. I appreciate you pulling out our priorities, and it's good for us to be reminded too of the progress made on them. And I think from my perspective and probably the board's perspective on all of them, we're really happy how far we got, but I, I hope we don't forget those, you know? Community supervision, 48-hour rule, deputy register fees, the one you started with, I think those were the ones you started with. There's still some work to do on those that are still a priority for us here that will, will help our residents. It was great to get to that point. And of course, you know, from our perspective, we would have said, let's not worry about this, let's get these done. So we want to make sure we get those to the finish line next year and look forward to working with you on those.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate your time this morning. The only last thing that I want to say is that as we go into 2024 session, if, as we, we still have another, this last session felt like it was 10 years long, but we still have another session to go in this two-year biennium. And I want to make sure that as people have thoughts and ideas as to what people would still like to have accomplished, that they're different from what we've got going on currently and always happy and open to sit down and talk with everybody as to what priorities are and where, where we need to go with things. So whether that's a Scott County Board thing or that's personally whatever, always happy to talk.
Okay. Administrator Vermillion has a question or comment?
Representative Tapke, I think one thing we should probably sit down and chat when Commissioner Ulrich and folks are available, Lisa, is the Met Council governance. You know, you talked about how the one committee is all county attorneys and county sheriff. There's only one county and one city on that, and they're the agencies responsible for implementing. And so I think it's important to be able to sit down and talk with you about that.
Yeah, do you want me to explain what that is or?
Yeah, could you give us a little, yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, so with the transportation bill, we had a wide gamut of rethinking how Met Council works in the metro. And so there was, on one hand, just moving straight to an elected Met Council, on the other hand, there was that we need to leave it all alone and not touch anything. And we kind of ended up in the center of, there've been, I don't know, there've probably been thousands of Met Council studies that have been done over the course of the last decade or two. And we authorized a new study this session, and it was, most of the studies come back to us, like I, I think we all understand that there are improvements that can be made in Met Council and how Met Council governance works. Exactly what those improvements are has been up for debate. And all the studies that come back to us is basically say that where we're at today is fine, and we can make some tweaks around the edges, but nothing substantive and nothing that is actually going to solve the problems that keep coming up from communities all across the metro. And so like we, full disclosure, Deb Barber is a good friend of mine. She's our Met Council rep here in Shakopee, and she does, in my opinion, a fantastic job. And, but there are other, that others across the metro that don't do a fantastic job and don't show up sometimes and don't refuse meetings and things. And so there's a lot of discussion that has to happen in there somewhere. And so we authorized a legislative study that's a direct, the reason why there's only one county and one city person on there is because it's a legislative study to say, hey, we are going to take this focus on, we need to get things done and we need to have, we need to authorize and, and create some change here as opposed to just tweaking around the edges. And so that will happen this summer and come back to us in February of next year, and we'll see what those, that legislative study says. And so there's a lot of different folks on there. But the goal is to find some motion forward as opposed to just little tweaks. So that's, that's the goal there and why this one's different and why I'm okay with it going forward. So thank you for that question.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? None? Okay. Thank you again, and we'll see you next year.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. With that, I did not see any amendments to the agenda, so our agenda will stand as it has been published and printed. And you all received the minutes in your packets. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? And if not, is there a motion to approve those minutes? There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to take a roll since Commissioner Ulrich's not there? Go ahead, Michelle.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Wickman-Brocky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes 5-0. With that, we'll go to recognition of interested citizens limited to five minutes per person or subject. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, come on up to the podium and let us know what you think. I see nobody. With that, we're going to go to number seven, and that is to receive information on the Scott County delivers topic infrastructure for economic development. Okay, who do we have to kick this off? Chris, is that you?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This morning, we are joined by leaders, some from the county, CDA, also from some of our cities, to talk about economic development. And I'm not sure who the author was of the very first sentence in this packet, but I think it's important because it says that economic development can be defined as the government's planned focus to make improvements in the standard of living through job creation, infrastructure, and supporting innovation. And that's really what we're here to talk about today. I think some interesting things around our investments and the impact of that, of those investments is where we're going to start. You're going to hear a little bit about some contrast in data points about Scott County's recovery from the pandemic as opposed to some of our neighboring communities and counties. And so I, it's a broad topic that we're going to try to cover in an hour, but I think we have the right people in the room to have the conversation. So with that, I'll ask the folks on this side of the table to introduce yourselves, and then Lisa, if you could start just who, who you are and what role you play, and then we'll jump right into questions.
I'm Paula Gustafson. I'm a Business Relationship Manager here in Scott County.
Jake Greasing on the Lighting Director here.
Greg Sorensen, Chief Information Officer.
Chair of McCrone Fiber Manager.
Here we met, Economic Assistance Director.
Barb Dahl, Health and Human Services Director.
Michael Kirske, Director of Planning and Development for the city of Shakopee.
Joe Faust, Business and Community Development Director for the Scott County CDA.
Brad Davis, Planning and Resource Management Director.
Lisa Fries, Scott County Transportation Services Director.
And then remotely, we have Mr. Andish.
Yeah, Ken Andish, Redevelopment Director of City.
From the city of New Prague. Thank you very much for being with us this morning. All right, I think we're going to start with transportation and fiber and then move into jobs and workforce. Paula, you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start out this morning. Good morning. When we think about transportation, I was looking at many of your slides, especially slides on page 30 and I think page 29, where we see some benefits to values, we see benefits to reliability. And I was wondering, how does the success with the transportation initiatives, the success of ATMs that's mentioned on the front page, the success of the value increase of properties around this inform your future decisions as you're making decisions about which you're going to tackle going forward?
Well, typically from a county transportation perspective, we look to our 20-year plan and, and we do a lot of work about where we plan investments and, and we model to see the impacts of those plans, investments, to see if we have potential congestion issues. And I, I think one of the, the maps that are on one of the slides here do show that, and, and it shows that we've been planful, and in the areas where we can influence, we've made investments in the right places. I, I think the regional system is very key because that provides us connection to the interstate system and the rest of the metro area. And without that mobility on those systems, then places throughout the county become more removed and it's harder to get to. And so those investments, I think, have helped shape the development in the county and, and make areas that are further out, like the Bell Plains, the Jordans, Alcoa New Markets, more attractive for investment in economic development.
As a follow-up question, as far as the, the infrastructure from the cities and the transportation plans, how does this infrastructure, how do these infrastructure plans support economic development?
You know, I think from a county perspective, as Lisa said, we're really planful. We look at where growth is projected to occur, and particularly look at the city's long-range plans, and then look at what investments do we need to make at a, at a county level to support that growth. And then at times, work with the cities on some of their long-range plans or kind of area-wide plans. And I know in the city of Shakopee, they did a pretty expansive study of the West End to look at what infrastructure is needed. And maybe so we could, I'll turn it over to Michael just to talk a little bit about that study and then how infrastructure investments were made from that type of study.
Sure, we did an AWR for the entire West End because there was some issues on sewer capacity and water capacity, and because of that, Shakopee Public Utilities built a new water tower out there, and they're in the process right now of completing a new substation. So we look at not only road infrastructure, but utility infrastructure, power. I think those investments have paid off. We're seeing, brought a new lift station in for sewer and water out there, and there's a new industrial project under construction right now.
I have a question. On the page 17 for the digital divide, it kind of looks like it's doing really well compared to its counterparts, you know, 7.23 leading the representative counties. And so if we try to approach zero, what level of investment, you know, the last mile to us because always the most expensive mile to get to? So how do you really drive that? What's the investment point where you say we've kind of invested enough to bring, do we need to bring it down any further because that last piece is so costly?
So the digital divide, we have had a really good trend, and I think that our role where we try to encourage providers to continue to raise investments on the last mile to, to residents and to businesses will help continue to improve the infrastructure component of the socioeconomic and infrastructure calculation that drives the digital, the digital index. Some of them, like the socioeconomic component of the, of the digital index is sort of, it is what it is, it's the geography of the, of the area. But I think that investments in education continue to help because the, the demographics can then access and utilize the, the infrastructure that's been put in place by the providers.
Okay. So of the 7.23, do we have an idea of what percent is affordability, what is, you know, actual having access at all? I mean, where, where is the investment? Is it an affordability issue or an access issue?
I think more of the providers are actually making investments right now actively on, on access. They do, every one of the providers has a affordability program for people who are there on free and reduced launches or those kinds of programs they can then access. Like I know Comcast has one of those programs. Every one of the major providers has some sort of affordability program. I was telling Mr. Kirske that we are meeting with his staff today, the Shakopee, there's a couple of providers who are actively making additional investments in Shakopee, which is already built out, but they want to continue making investments for access.
Perry, can I do two follow-up questions on that? As we were planning for this, you were busy with our legislative colleagues, and so there are two questions that came out of that. And one is just anecdotally, what do we know about school kid access? You know, there's this very compelling commercial on TV about kids that do and don't have access. And so what can you, what, just anecdotally, what do you know about kids in Scott County and their access? So let me pause there and then I'll ask my second question.
Okay, so I think we have some data points on, is it page two? Where we talk a little bit about students in general. So page two has where, a university in Miami study found that a one-person, one-point increase in high school GPA raises the earnings by about 12%. So if two students are both, let's say identical, their parents are identically involved in raising, they have the same classes, but one has access to adequate broadband, the other one does not, the, the student who has lower access or lower broadband will be almost a full half a point lower on GPA, which affects colleges, affects earnings, and all those kinds of things. So to answer your question about, at Scott County, the board made some significant investments in 2020, which was able to have us partner with a provider to provide fixed wireless access through the rural parts of Scott County, and that was very successful. That is also driven, as I pointed out, some additional investments by providers in the rural parts of Scott County as well with, with wireless. So we're in a, we're in a pretty good spot. We want to continue to see, every time broadband is one of those things where the more you use it, the more they consume it, right? So it's, the 2026 state goal is to be at 100 by 100, 100 download by 100 upload. The 2022 goal was 25 download and three meg upload. We've achieved that for 95% plus of Scott County, so that's helped our students. And then anecdotally, our, our IT directors for the schools have indicated that more and more of their students are, have access and are not requiring as many of the hotspots.
My second question was, as we were planning for this conversation, we talked a lot about partnership between with fiber and highway development and laying fiber along new highway projects and those kinds of things. And I'm wondering what people, anyone in this group thinks about the efforts, our efforts to market that as an asset in Scott County that would bring employers here?
So we do, we've been working really great with the Transportation Services Division on being really in alignment when they're doing a project and us, you know, the fiber planning being at the same time, you know? And where we put in fiber or conduit when it makes sense, not every single time, because you don't want to have conduit out just in the middle of nowhere if you're putting in or replacing a section of road, it just becomes expensive. But I think that we are in a very good spot with, with what we did with the advanced traffic management system and connecting the signals and those kinds of things, and we are in a unique spot to tell a great story to potential employers about our infrastructure. We've had in the past, when some of the companies have come here, we were able to tell them that we have national providers as well as regional providers that ride our fiber and can get pretty much to any of the major economic development lots. So I think it's, we just want to continue to get out and tell our story. With that, I will now up to the members on the panel.
I think we've worked pretty well hand in hand with Perry on that. We've had some questions over time about when's the right time to put the infrastructure in, whether it's good to put conduit in, in it with a project if we don't know if it's going to be filled or not. I think that verdict is still out. We did that on County Road 42, and I think we're hoping that, that will reap some benefits for that quarter because it's more intensely developed. So I, I think as long as we continue to work together collaboratively and try to make the best economic decisions as we're making those investments, based on what we know, I think we can help advance fiber network countywide.
Oh, can I, you look like you were also going to say something, Joe?
Yes, we often receive leads from either the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development or Greater MSP, and many times they'll ask about fiber availability, and we collaborate with Perry, and he's been very responsive in providing us with the maps and the information that we need in order to make those responses to the larger companies or leads.
Thanks, thanks. I'm sorry, Greg, go ahead.
So do we have any idea for, it kind of makes a lot of investment in fiber. Do we have any idea what our percentage of investment is for the fiber, you said that versus the providers? I mean, are we providing 25% investment, 50%? What's the kind of investment split portfolio between what the providers invest and what the county invests? between what the providers invest and what the county invests?
I don't, I don't know that answer offhand, but I can get it. I tried to get that back to everybody through, through an email. But I guess my, my instinct is that the providers have made such significantly more investment. As you know, the, the last mile is expensive. We do have a program where we do, we have open access where we work with providers to try to get them on through the middle mile to the last mile so that they can get to new markets, or they can get to, in this example, the economic development or those, those commercial and industrial lots. We actually have a couple providers that we are actively working with to get them over that middle mile to use our fiber, which would cost them a lot of money to try to build it. So if they can leverage our middle mile to get to the final mile, but that final mile still is a significant investment. And the providers do apply to the Office of Broadband their order to border grant, and that is typically a 50 50 split of the government, either like a local municipality matching it or a provider helping cover the half that match and then filling that out over time. And then the state makes the half that investment.
So when I think of the digital divide, I think of kind of three legs to that stool. There's the, the broad, just the infrastructure, which this board has made investments in, and you've turned that investment into success at a higher level in terms of economic development. But there's also access to the technology and the hardware to make use of that connectivity resource. And there's the ability to know how to use that technology and the hardware. So I'm wondering from like Barb and Kerry's perspective, in terms of economic development, are there, are there gaps? Are there things you're doing to help people participate in the labor force to upskill that builds off that infrastructure now that we have almost everybody in the county having that access? Those other two legs of that stool with the the resources and the training and skills to use those resources, what are we doing in that space right now?
That's a great question. We aren't offering anything specifically here internally. That's like, you know, workshops that are run by our staff, but there are a number of workshops that are offered through the Career Force System by the state of Minnesota. And then, of course, if there's any kind of, depending on the individual's kind of career goals and what their current skill set is, and if, you know, they've been laid off and they need some upscaling, like you were saying, if they're enrolled in one of our programs, they do have access to some pretty significant training funds. So depending on what their, what their career goal is and what their skill goal is, they will work one on one with an employment counselor to kind of find some of that more specialized training available. And hopefully we'll get into that program and we can help fund that.
Could we look at the charts on pages, well, it goes 12, 13, and 14 really looks at labor force and labor force projections. And I wonder if one of you could talk about the pieces of that that stand out most importantly, as you think about planning and investments going forward?
Yeah, I think if you look on 12, it probably just helps to demonstrate the story that we continue to keep hearing about our labor shortages. You know, I think this indicates that we had roughly about 2,000 workers that were entering the workforce here locally each year. And now that has come down about 1,000 workers. So that just impacts our ability to, from the economic development side, you have to have the workforce in order to expand your growth. On the plus side of that, we at least, we are continuing to see growth within our economic, within our workforce. And I think there are some counties and even statewide that they haven't been as lucky to be able to, to see that and demonstrate that. And I think even if you look statewide at our, our population, Tim O'Neill from D E D had shared some data just as of Friday, and I want to say that the state of Minnesota had decreased our population by like around 20,000 people over the last two years. And we've actually seen growth. We know that within our population. And then in addition to that, within our, our working age, labor force, to see that increase is, is beneficial and helpful.
Could you point out more for the board about some of the pieces where, what are some of the nuggets that have made Scott County come through that pandemic recovery process a little stronger than, than some other communities? And that's really, anyone on the panel that wants to speak to that.
Yeah, I think probably one thing to highlight on the bottom of 13 talks a little bit just about the number of jobs that have come back since COVID had started. And we have seen an 11.7% increase in our jobs. And when you look at statewide, Minnesota's only seen a point five increase. And so, you know, some of that stems to, I think, creating some of the conditions that we're talking about here today of supporting economic development. I think the diversity of our, of our labor sectors that we have here have really been beneficial. But my colleagues probably have other thoughts.
Perhaps in addition to that, too, in Scott County, we have a higher labor participation rate. So I think statewide, it's around 69%. We're in the mid seventies. So of those that are able to work in Scott County, a higher percent are in the labor force working.
And why is that? Do you know?
We have a highly skilled and educated population. I think whether they're employed in Scott County or elsewhere, that may be part of it. Also, the expanding job opportunities here, I think, assist with that.
As a follow up to that, I was looking at page 13 and page 12, and it, you know, we could see that we have had a decrease in the available workers, but we see a strong increase in employment trends. And so I wanted to, if you could talk a little bit about that and the impact of having a reduced labor force, but yet in a significant job growth. Are those jobs being filled by people outside of Scott County if we're having those jobs available in Scott County? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we have continued to see our, the number of jobs available within Scott County has increased. So we have about 60,000 jobs right now within Scott County. We have a labor force of around 83,000. So that our labor force is the people that work here, or I'm sorry, that live here. They might not always work here. And I think that, again, we've been fortunate enough that we have continued to still see a net increase overall of the people that are entering into the labor force. So I think that's helpful. And I think that we have had a number of new opportunities that have been available within the county that have still allowed us to have that labor force particular, participation rate remain high.
I think one of the, the things to also point out, if you look at slide 26, and we looked at the travel sheds before and after the 169 and 41 interchange project. Now, it's greatly influenced by some of the impacts of COVID. But if you look at the, the dark orange, that's where the concentrations of trips, trip ins were prior to COVID. And as you can see, we're, we're seeing a lot more folks from the south, south of Scott County, coming to Scott County and then reverse commuting or going home at night. So we're seeing that our, at least our labor shed area has increased particularly to the south. And so that's one of the noteworthy things. I think that's going on and helping fill some of those jobs in Scott County.
One of the things that we have, have kind of kicked around is about, on, on page eight, page eight really captures the county scale goal of 50 by 30. And so I'm wondering if someone can just highlight that, but also talk about how do we consider the work from home workforce as we think about this and as we think about planning going forward?
I can address that. So about a decade ago, there was a goal to establish 50% of the residents living and working within Scott County. Back in 2012, it was about 36%. In 2021, that number increased for the first time above 50% at 56.3% were living and working in Scott County. In speaking with the state demographers office, they attribute a large percent of that increase to the increased 13,000 jobs that were added in Scott County. Another contributing factor is the increase in the number of individuals post COVID working from home. That's now at 24.4%. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, that was helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. So to follow up on that, so if ours was 50%, and yet a lot of that was attributed to kind of remote working, what would it be, and what type of investment? I mean, have we arrived at the 50%? Are we trying to get the non-remote worker number to 50%? Kind of what's the goal here? Have we, have we reached our goal? Or are we still looking at our goal as actual working in the county, not teleworking?
I think the initial goal was to have 50% of our residents living and working in Scott County. So we would consider it having been met. I think there's always room for improvements. It will reduce the transportation trips on the roads, have people more engaged in the community if we could increase that. We're still below the seven county metropolitan area. We're above a couple of the neighboring counties. But I think anytime we can have more residents living and working here is better for the county as a whole, especially with the high skill sets we have and some of the jobs that we have available, if they could fill those internally.
I agree with Joe. The origins of that goal really was to alleviate congestion on our major river crossings for commuters going up north to work. And so I think the fact that we do have more jobs here in the county and more people working, working from home achieves that kind of origin goal of getting less traffic off of those crossings. So I'd say it's a, it's a win. And I think it's a sustainable win. I can't imagine those numbers dropping anytime soon.
Does that change anything? For, for everybody sitting at the table, okay, we've hit the goal of 50% living and working here. Does that change how you think about your work at all?
For me, it, I've thought about, and I think we have a much higher daytime population in our communities than we've ever had. And I think that's helped then drive some of the retail that serves that daytime population. I think we keep thinking of new amenities to serve that daytime population with people working from home. They tend to have a little more flexibility and might be able to recreate or cold golfing or do some activities throughout the day. So I think that we're going to see more of that type of amenity kind of development. But maybe Michael and Ken, you have a perspective on what's happening in your cities around that topic?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've seen with people being at home, there's a higher demand in our parks and trail systems. So we've made a major investment in increasing our quality of playgrounds and extending our trail system and then making sure all the new subdivisions are all linked together. People want to be able to recreate in the middle of the day. You'll see a lot more people on the trails than you've ever seen.
Ken, are you seeing more daytime population in New Prague?
Yeah, I would reiterate that, well, I know, but the, we do, this is your town business, the county city, we're getting a little more, I think, than we got in the past, that daytime population. So from what happened during COVID, we benefited from the work from home requirement for a number of people that had been traveling on, on New Prague in particular. And we would, we would, you know, to build our local retail as well.
I asked him another question about this slide.
You can.
Just checking.
No.
No.
So I was surprised when I was reading through the packet not to see, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't see the words Greater MSP anywhere. And Joe, you mentioned Greater MSP in a response just a little bit earlier. So when I look at this, I say, on the one hand, yeas, we met our goal. We, in three years, we went from 41% to 56%. But if I look at our neighboring counties, everybody, including Hennepin County, went up by a sizable margin. So we can, and we can, will, think about what that means for us in terms of economic development locally. But are we plugged into any conversations with Greater MSP on what, what are the implications of that shift regionally? And where do we, Scott, where does Scott County fit within that regional picture of how the workforce has really changed? Where, where they're working? And then what does that mean for our local communities?
I think Greater MSP is looking at target marketing types of industries that match skill sets of the Greater MSP region. Transportation wise, I, I know they, they came on a bus tour of Scott County and became familiar with our transportation system, our available lots, et cetera, so that they can help guide some of those leads to us that might be a fit for our communities. And they do support us, leads that they receive that are looking in areas within a certain parameter of airports, the Twin Cities, et cetera. Specifically, I'm talking to them about the commuting statistics. We have not had that conversation, but probably should.
I got a question kind of on that. On page 27 is our MVTA routes. And I realize we don't have the most current data, and obviously 2021 is probably due to the COVID and people not working. But where, do we have any kind of anecdotal data where we're going with transit and trying to get the right worker to the right spot and them rolling in transit? It looks like there was just a huge decrease. Is that decrease temporary due to COVID based on the data you have? Or is this going to become a transportation problem to get the right worker with the right skill to the right work?
Well, transit's been one of those areas, I think, nationwide that's seen the biggest impact from COVID. And the Twin Cities and in particular, Scott County has seen some of those trends. The takeaways that I see in this is that if you look at our service area, or I mean, our service hours, they're kind of rebounded and they're flat on page 30, if that's page 30, or 28, sorry. But the passenger trips has really declined. And there's also, as a result of, and in addition to the decline, there's been a shift. The shift has been away from the express routes to the downtown, the ones that would carry the workers to downtown Minneapolis or downtown St. Paul. The, what we had pegged as commuter route here is that the 495 route, which was started in 2017, 2018 as a demonstration from the Mall of America to Shakopee, that's been pretty steady. It's, it's rebounded after COVID, kind of peaked in 2018. And it's still strong, but it's not back to pre-COVID levels. And then the other thing that has happened is that the providers in MVTA has put a focus on, since their express ridership, there's not a demand for it. They've shifted their service hours to local. But you can see that the local passengers have not really grown by the amount that probably the service hours have grown. So I think transit remains to be seen how well it rebounds. And in particular, in Scott County, it's hard to put cost effective transit on the ground. If you look at, this year, we didn't include those slides, but if you look at transit subsidy per rider, Scott County's routes have some of the highest in the region. And so it's something that we, we need to be aware of as, as, as we go forward. Can we afford or is it cost effective? There's one data point that I've seen that has shown, that has shown that one thing that's kind of behind this is that things like Uber and Lyft have grown more, well, public transit actually is, is either flat or declining, but Uber and Lyft have grown. And I think part of that is because they're more flexible and people can call that service on demand. And it's part of the reason, I think, that our local service providers like Southwest, Southwest and MVTA are really looking to these on demand type services to see if they can meet the demand better for the residents in the county.
So when we talk about the subsidy, we have a high subsidy, and you look at the overlap and where they're going and the flexibility there, do we participate? Or is there any subsidies for that? I mean, is that from, you know, transportation, get people at the right time or location? Is there a subsidy for that? Or something we could be working towards? Would that be a more flexible to get people these weird locations at odd times?
That is something that probably we need to do a little bit more investigation on. We did do some work a few years ago, and there wasn't enough Uber and Lyft providers in the area to really make it cost effective. But as we see that market grow, there's more drivers out there and potentially there's more opportunity. I think the, the, the thing that transit really provides is that, because it is subsidized, it provides a cost effective ride for those folks who don't have economic means. Where Uber and Lyft, you know, that, that has a, a financial implication. If you can afford it, it's great. If you can't afford it, it's not a great option. But so it's probably one of the things we do need to see if there's a way that we can help that, utilize that private marketplace to help provide more rides. So Lisa, tie it back to Jake's question, because I think the hub and spoke
So Lisa, tie it back to Jake's question, because I think the hub-and-spoke model has lots of issues. And it goes back to Jake's question on the dispersment of jobs and how transit ties to that.
That is the million-dollar issue. And I see we're going to be making large investments in transit, but we no longer have that downtown core to bring transit to. We've looked at things like the one sixty-nine Transitway as a means to, one, provide other opportunities along one sixty-nine and fifty-five for people to go to different places and vice versa, to get people from the center city who have maybe job skills that are aligned with some of our jobs here in the county out here. But those systems are expensive to develop. And they also, if you develop like a Transitway, you are setting up a level of investment that if things shift, then you can't shift those, the infrastructure around is easy. And that's part of the struggle with all of these light rail lines and BRT lines that are being developed. They, once you make that investment, you've got a lot of dollars put into those systems. And hopefully, the investment will come around them, but then other parts of the metro don't have service. I don't know if I hit on that adequately or not.
Yeah, no, I think that's part of it. And I think it ties, though, when Jake asked, what was the impact with the job shift? It is right there. And to Brad's point, even during the day, it changes the use within the system here within the community, correct? So there are impacts. And I think, Jake, it's probably still a couple of years out from maybe understanding what those totally are. But that job shift there has really changed how people move.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
Maybe Lisa can respond to this. But I believe that we received federal guidance, MVT and other providers, to keep the system going, the routes running, the system going during the pandemic. And so that created more inefficiency and more higher subsidies because we were basically instructed to keep those routes going. Is that your understanding, Lisa?
His question was that during the pandemic, the federal FTA requested that we continue to keep these transit routes growing, which increased the subsidy.
And I think that's true metro-wide. But in particular, we've seen the express routes that MVTA had, pretty much have been diminished. We're down to probably about ten percent of the service pre-COVID, which makes sense. People aren't consistently going downtown. We used to have a very strong service to the U. That's no longer operating at the level that it was before through MVTA. I think we have seen them really focus on trying to increase local routes. They started a route along forty-two and to Prior Lake and to Mystic Lake. And so some of the, some of the service is still there, but where they're providing it is different. I think if you look to the core, you'll see a little bit different kinds of things happening there. Some of their stronger routes are these arterial, what they're calling the arterial BRTs, which historically have been their high-performing transit routes along certain corridors in Minneapolis and St. Paul and the first ring suburbs. And those routes are really doing quite well in comparison to others.
Brad, can we look at pages twenty-two and twenty-three? Could you talk about how the work that your team does? As requests or plans for annexations come forward, the narrative for this discussion talked about that sort of tension between growth and preservation of some of the natural spaces. And so as you get requests or projects, how does your team evaluate the economic development impact as you are weighing which projects to support and go forward on? Help us think through that annexation piece.
Yeah, so the, page twenty-two shows the amount of land that's been annexed by each city over the last twenty-three years. And it shows both land that then ultimately develops as residential development, which is primarily what you see a lot of yellow on the graph. But there are significant annexations that occur to really then accommodate commercial and industrial development. And in particular, Shakopee has seen a lot of that here in the last couple of years. New Prague, we needed to update that table once Ken saw this because we did not include some of the annexations that occurred in La Sura County. So, and then they've also recently annexed some property. And Ken, do you want to speak to that and then how that area is being staged for economic development on the north side of your community, Ken?
Yeah, so as Brad noted here, we, over the past twenty-three years in New Prague, have had a little under three hundred acres of annexation on the Scott County side of the city, a little over two hundred on the La Sura County side. But recently, we developed our own city industrial park. Here in New Prague, we had annexed back in twenty fifteen about twenty-three acres. We've sold all but three of those lots outright and have pending sales on the additional, or the remaining three acres or six acres or three lots that we had remaining. And we're looking potentially, from the EDA standpoint, to annex up to another seventy-six acres immediately north of our industrial park for more development. But that gets into a whole bigger discussion of, again, infrastructure utility-wise and then local roadway extensions into the industrial park area for our industrial park to continue to grow. But, you know, we're not on any major roadway or anything, so it's not to the level of like, you know, one sixty-nine or thirty-five improvements. But local improvements are really our hangup at this point.
So on page twenty-three shows several maps of where these annexations have occurred over the last three years. And the city of Shakopee and the city of Elkany Market has probably annexed the largest areas and for mostly commercial and industrial development. I know the city took in some acreage for continued residential development. But with Michael here, maybe, Michael, talk about just how important some of those annexations are to the future growth of Shakopee and your commercial and industrial area.
Sure, so all of the land on that map and the along one sixty-nine is all slated for industrial or commercial development. The area that's in blue on the bottom of that map is going to be residential. And there's a small little piece in the red that'll be residential. But Opus has already got five hundred thousand square feet under construction. And we're seeing probably another million, a million to a million and a half square feet in that area for industrial development. And we're specifically not allowing warehouse and distribution because we found that we, from a wage standpoint, can't keep pace with the rest of the Twin Cities. We're at the last project we just did for Sam's Club Distribution. They're having to pay twenty-four dollars an hour. I can remember, I think Amazon has had fifteen dollars an hour. So we're really trying to get the higher wage, higher value jobs now.
On page twenty shows some information that Maxwell Research did a couple of years ago, or last year, twenty twenty-two, looking at industrial land, supply and demand. And I think that data kind of reflects where we're going to continue to see some kind of annexation issues popping up between our cities and townships. Those areas that have a deficit of what we call class one and two acres. And class one meant it was essentially pad-ready. The lot was platted, it had utilities to the lot. It was ready to develop with a building permit. Class two was properties that were zoned for the development, maybe platted or not, but doesn't have utilities directly there. It's kind of within that last mile of extending utilities. And overall, across all of our cities, we have a shortage of that class one and two acreage. And I think as we continue to see demand for this type of development, cities are going to need to annex properties, greenfield sites, get them into the city boundaries, and then start the staging of sewer and water and streets. So that kind of demand that you see in page twenty, to me, then relates to some of the annexation discussions and activities that we start hearing about at the county. And then often, at the county level, we're brought in if there's any decisions about updating orderly annexation agreements to truly accommodate this type of transfer of land and just work through those issues. It's been our role.
Thank you. One last question.
I'll take one kind of in the preamble, and transportation on page two. They talk about the CAB, Connected Autonomous Vehicles. How, when we see that happening, what's the impact? We have such a large slate of powers of wealth that don't have that. Where do we see that in the future? What type of investment? Is that investment greater than other types of ATMS investment? How does that look going forward the next ten to twenty years?
Well, we've been trying to monitor that. And I think with COVID, the initiative slowed down a little bit. But now we're starting to see more discussions. We've seen demonstrations of connected vehicles, particularly transit-type vehicles and autonomous vehicles. And they're still having struggles in winter climates to be fully functional. So I think there's a lot of work to be done yet in the technology area. While we've made investments in fiber and equipment, we don't know where that technology is going to land and what's going to be the state of the art. Is it going to be a record, a CD, an eight-track? You know, going forward, there's a lot of work to figure out what the state of that technology will be and how it works, both in rural areas, which we still have a substantial amount of rural areas on our roadways and then also in more urban areas. So I think we'll see a variety of things happen. Right now, the electrification of the fleet seems to be the current focus, trying to get us to move to that technology versus totally, you know, gas-powered vehicles. So moving forward, I think it could happen rather rapidly. But I don't think we're on the immediate cusp of a great change in that area. Others may disagree, but.
The statement in there that, you know, the fiber network and the ATMS project sets us up well, I agree with everything that Lisa said. We really don't know how it's going to evolve. But with the fiber at the traffic signals, it does look like, one of the things is the communication of the machine-to-machine. So as two vehicles are approaching intersection together, then their ability to communicate to each other. But we don't know what that protocol is going to look like, if it's going to, if the major manufacturers of vehicles are going to agree on a standard that they can all leverage. But it does look like having switching at the edge, hulsters to the intersection, have that ability to have the communication be very rapid, like in sub-millisecond, like very fast, so that the machines-to-machine can communicate. So we don't know what that's going to look like. But I think at least we're encouraged that we have that infrastructure so that if it starts evolving, like Lisa said, rapidly, we might be in a position to encourage manufacturers and people to come down to our community and make investments.
Carver County, any last messaging that you want to leave with the commissioners about workforce, jobs, training? Any last pieces you think they should have on their radar that we haven't talked about? Maybe we're going to say the same thing. Maybe you can talk about the workforce or mobility work.
Sure, yeah, we are currently in process of trying to set up a workforce mobility program here in Scott County in partnership with Dakota County Technical College. And Carver County is also going to be a part of it. The workforce mobility program is something that was run in Dakota County recently. In Dakota County, they use ARPA funds to provide free training in high-demand industries for their residents who kind of met a certain income threshold. And we're looking to do something on a similar but smaller scale here. And we are just, right now, kind of sorting out the schedule and when those class offerings will be. But it will likely be starting in September. We'll be offering classes for certified nursing assistant and trained medication aide. It will be a paired class, which actually, DCTC said they've never done before pairing it. And they really love the idea because it'll make folks even more employable after they exit that. We'll also be offering a pharmacy tech program and a boiler operators licensing program. So we're really excited about that. Soon as we get the schedule nailed down, we'll have kind of a pretty robust marketing effort that will be led by Dakota County Technical College out to all of our residents, so.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Brennan?
I have a couple of questions. One is our entertainment district in Scott County is very large. And how does that impact economic development in the area? Mr. Kurski.
I think it's a draw, in particular with people being home now. I think the change at Canterbury has created more, it's not just a racetrack anymore. It's more of a much larger community. I think Valley Fair has adapted pretty well. I think their change in their Halloween program, we had a lot of issues when they ran the last program they had. So they switched it to more of a family-oriented program. And they actually did about the same amount of revenue with a lot less problems. So I think it's an asset. I think we have to manage it well. I think transportation, particularly with the amphitheater, is going to be important with nineteen thousand seats and moving people in and out. And I think a lot of those people will not be coming from Scott County, but they'll be coming from outside of Minnesota. So I think it's making sure that their experience is good.
I have one more question. A lot of our people with disabilities are having, struggling to find jobs. More work is being done to connect them to the job market and provide that opportunity for them.
Yeah, I think that's such an area where we have opportunity to continue to do more. I think as we look to solve our labor shortage problem, I think we need to look at how to engage all groups that maybe aren't as engaged with the workforce to the level that the general population is. And so I think, you know, we continue to have conversations and a strong partnership with new options. But I know that they haven't been able to probably be as robust in that areas that they had wanted to or hoped, just due to some of the staffing challenges that they themselves have experienced. And I think many of our disability providers have experienced due to the labor shortage. So I think it's an area we need to continue to, continue to part with our local agencies on and continue to provide work and support for solutions for those folks.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brennan, I will say, when we reviewed some of the innovative budget requests, it hit two things. It's innovative for the county, but maybe based on a neighbor, so it has some experience to build off of. What's about disability jobs? And that was really encouraging to see that come in from our staff and some of the supervisors there. So I think maybe there's something in that innovation grant that might help there.
Yeah, we have, staff are concerned about it and have been focusing on what is the right issue and the right solution. So there are ideas percolating.
And if I could just add, the vocational rehabilitation services that are run by the state, just, it was last week or the week before, had asked to come and do a tour of our career force center and our career lab here, met with our employment and training staff and discussed ways that we can better work together. We provide a lot of the same services and similar services. So how can we complement one another? What are they offering that we don't, what are we offering that they don't? And how can we create some, like, combined programming? So there will be more to come on that. That was exciting.
My next, thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the panel. I really like the focus of this Scott delivers because from a county perspective, at least my perspective from the board, is economic development from a county role is about the infrastructure, is about making this an attractive place to do business. It's not so much about attracting certain businesses. That we leave to our city partners, that we leave to the CDA. So I appreciate the focus. One thing, I think, we talked about how proud we are about our labor force participation rate. It's always been very high, continues to be high, and I just want to remind people, that's all the people 16 and over who are working, who could be working. That number includes all of our senior citizens who are retired and don't want to work anymore. So that's a, a huge rate. But that's my caution, is that we've, we've enjoyed, a little bit of why we enjoyed that rate, besides being such hard-working folk, is that we have a very young county, and our county is aging a bit, and I think we, we may see that change a bit as more, more folks age, and we shouldn't, you know, pull the fire alarm or anything when we see that, because demographically, we might just see that a little bit. And it's just really good, I think, to be able to communicate to the public, because I think especially after the pandemic, a lot of thought about all these people not working, we need to get them back to work. Well, here in Scott County, people are working, they are back to work, and we just need to make sure we can communicate that well. Early on, when we talked about transportation, I think, you know, Lisa, you talked about a lot of the great things we've done to help businesses be able to even expand further into our county, but I do want to make sure that we, we talk about our, our transportation infrastructure that helps even the more urbanized part of the county do better on 13, things like that. We're not, yeah, this is a message to any of our city neighbors watching, you know, this, we're not all about, you know, moving business and people further and further away and keeping them on the roads longer. We, you know, all the work done around 13 is helping move people better and move freight and commerce safer in our more urbanized areas, too. So I think that's important, that we, we hold that up and celebrate all the work that folks have done on that. I think that's all. Oh, I just want to echo my colleague's comments on really looking at folks who have disabilities and getting them into the labor force. And I think our service providers are in a tough spot with staffing, but I think we have a lot to learn from some of our local businesses who have been doing this work without government involvement, and, and I really push us to, to look to them and, and partner with them versus just, just looking at those service providers. So hopefully, in that innovation, we can make sure we do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barrett.
This is going to go on the theme of what a time to be alive. What a time to be alive. I mean, we are in a state of transition. We might not know the protocols, as Perry was talking about, we don't know the protocols for different types of vehicles, but if, whether it's connected or autonomous vehicles. I'm trying to think, was it in the 80s back in the day when we were going to be in flying cars by now? Was it in the paperless office? But we're getting closer. It does feel like we are definitely closer to that being a reality. I'm going to look at Lisa, like, is, it's, it's happening, right? It's going to happen. We don't know exactly when. So transit changes is changing, transportation has changed is changing. So, yeah, these connected and autonomous vehicles, what is it, A T M S, the, the system along 42? I used to say that was the longest, shortest road in the country, and now it's actually like, wow, I can actually make the 35E Green North Arrow eight times out of, eh, seven times out of 10. So things are changing, things are changing. It's pretty impressive. So, and I know we are looking at that, we don't know the protocols, but we're trying to set the table as a county to have that infrastructure in place. I think we did a lot of that in 2020, 2021 for, for internet and broadband. One of my biggest questions remains this, and it is not necessarily in the county purview, but the collective us, that we all have these different placards around the table and represent different parts, but it's the collective us. The transition from what seems to be, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a, a heavy distribution-type, service-oriented industry to something that, boy, are, are we in a spot to where we could leverage the dirt that we actually have, pointing to the, one of the last slides, to be a transitional type of county where we can bring in new industry that we haven't maybe thought of? We've been doing L L E, live, learn, earn for, I heard some, I don't know if it was groanings or mumblings or whatever it was, but 15 years we've been doing that, right? So sometimes when you're got the blinders on and you're doing this thing, you can't see the transition and then, and make those changes and adjustments. So I'm just wondering out loud collectively, as a county, are we in a spot that we are actively pursuing the next best thing, or the next new thing, or the first old thing that was pretty sexy back in the day, like manufacturing? I know that kind of lost its luster, but boy, that's exciting in the last couple of years, to bring back those types of industries to this county with what we've already done, or is there collective thinking again? Well, we, you know, this is what we've been doing, so this is what we keep doing, this is, we got this program that's been, so, oh, wait a minute, what did we miss? Because we were doing this thing. Like, are we, again, the collective we have our head on the swivel, like, oh, boy, there's some really neat opportunities that we could take advantage of if our blinders were off. I'm not saying they're on, but just creatures of habit. That was a lot.
Do you have responses?
I, I, I think we're doing it. I mean, I think that if you look, Lisa and Shakopee, the most recent projects we've done, Churney, which came from Adino, which is a very sophisticated advanced manufacturing company, K E B America, their corporate headquarters, and they double the size of their facility, and we've made really clear in all that land, we've annexed on the west end, it's not going to be for distribution, it's going to be for manufacturing.
I think I would add to that, too. With the Scott County Center for Entrepreneurship, we are looking for new innovative ideas, and we've had a number of businesses go through that program, as well as the Fast Track Challenge. We've seen good success with 33 new jobs in the past year at an average wage of $80,000. So again, not creating more of the same, but trying to look at innovative approaches in businesses.
Okay, thank you, Leslie.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask Brad a couple of thoughts on 20, because that has been a topic of discussion around here lately, right? Annexation, and what for is annexation? So a place like Savage shows a deficit of 27. I'm assuming some of that, I don't know what your thoughts are, would come for redevelopment, or does that mean some of that might even shift if you start to look at it to a place like Prior Lake, where we're having that discussion right now? I know that's one of the things that's been brought up. I mean, clearly Shakopee is high demand because of the location where it sits on 169, but it also shows Jordan with the surplus in Bell Plain, and they've talked about being willing to carry. Does the county refer, so I'm asking about five questions here, you know? Does the county refer some of these, like, industrial to a place like Jordan and Bell Plain, because they're willing to deal with that? It puts them on 169. And in a place like Jordan, where we're sitting in a surplus, I still have to believe that cost of running that pipe up, like, to the R T F is extremely expensive for 10 lots, eight lots, whatever that is. What does that chart tell you or say to you as we're working through some of these discussions?
Yeah, I think in, in the city of Savage, I think their deficit really can be made up with some redevelopment. When we did the bus tour with Greater M S P, we took a look at some of those businesses along 101, near the city of Shakopee line, and really underutilized properties, and I think the city of Savage is really trying to focus redevelopment of those properties and probably get them platted and get utilities out to each of those new lots. So that's kind of the story I see in Savage, is the redevelopment. Down in Jordan, there is a surplus now. I think a lot of their projected growth is to the south and west, where they've invested a lot of infrastructure out to the 59, 169 intersection area, and a lot of that acreage is slated for commercial and industrial growth. I'll refer to Joe, if, how you get some of the leads that come in from Greater M S P or others, and how you've directed them to some of those communities that have that surplus.
And Brad, one of my specific questions is, I'm assuming we get some of these light industrial lawn, you know, you keep saying we get calls. Do we refer them to Jordan or to?
Yep, understood, yep. We get calls from a lot of home extended businesses that have kind of outgrown their, their house. They start asking us about properties that are available to relocate and expand their business. They start looking at some properties in the townships. We will, we will mention, if you're looking for properties, you've got options in the cities, at some of those city industrial parks, particularly city of Jordan and New Prey, Bell Plains. So, yeah, we do that initial, have you looked at those properties? For whatever reason, they don't pursue those city industrial lots and continue to have discussions with the county about opening up some rural properties. Yep. But how about on your perspective?
Certainly. Um, Scott County C D A has a membership to the Minnesota Commercial Real Estate Association, so we receive broker leads with specific requests. So they will ask for five acres or 10 acres or a specific building size, and many times they call out the community in which they're looking, or the communities, or a certain mile radius from the Twin Cities. Oftentimes, if there are not sites available in the communities, such as Shakopee, Savage, Prior Lake, and we know that there are lots or acreage in the other communities, we will respond with those availability. And oftentimes, they're surprised how close those communities really are to the Twin Cities. It's more of that perception that they're more rural, so we are trying to guide them to the available lots in Scott County.
So we're not the end of the earth here sometimes, right? Can see it, yeah. Commissioner Ulrich's been waiting for a few minutes here.
Well, there's a couple of comments, and I'm going to speculate a little bit where we're at, where we might be going. I see transit as being much smaller, much more individualized, autonomous vehicles, picking up people at their homes, bringing them to destinations. I see that that's going to grow, and I, I think the vehicles are going to become much, much, much smaller, a raging society. I think that's going to increase the volunteer pool. I think Hopscotch might be a model that could take off, but most of all, I think we need to, either for scale or the county engage a futurist, have somebody come, and we had a futurist come to scale a couple of years ago. I, I think we could use that again, but I think we're at the cusp of a dramatic change in how people get around and how, how they get to jobs. And so I'm anxious to see what develops there.
I didn't hear that.
Hear me on that?
Okay, great, you have more to comment, so, all right, thank you. Anybody else here? Nobody? Okay. Thank you all very much, and I think we got a lot of good growth opportunities here in Scott County, that's for sure. So anyhow, with that, we are going to move on in our agenda. That is, we're going to move to the central. These normally pass in one motion, are deemed non-controversial, but we are going to, uh-oh. So we're going to start with 8.1. Adopt Resolution Number 2023-12, approving a three-year agreement between the county of Scott and the Minnesota Public Employees Association, Sheriff Non-Licenced Essential Dispatch Supervisors effective January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2025, and rescinding Resolution Number 2020-050. 8.2, adopt Resolution 2023-30, authorizing final payment to Batumins Roadways Incorporated for the County Highway 42 pavement rehabilitation project. 8.3, adopt Resolution Number 2023-54, approving the rezone preliminary and final plat of Smigard Oaks and Conservation Eastmans, consisting of three lots on 12.18 acres. Paul K. and Kathleen Smigard, applicants and property owners in Section 27 of Spring Lake Township. 8.4, adopt Resolution Number 2023-139, authorizing the acceptance of funds for the Minnesota Youth Program from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, which is D E D. 8.5, adopt Resolution Number 2023-140, authorizing application for and, if awarded, acceptance of grant funds from the Sauer Family Foundation entering into a grant agreement and amending the 2023 budget. 8.6, adopt Resolution Number 2023-146, authorizing an amendment to a cooperative agreement with the State of Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for the Minnesota Valley State Trail County-State Aid Highway 101 segment. 8.7, adopt Resolution Number 2023-147, authorizing entering into a utility installation agreement with Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative for Rural Intersection Lighting. 8.8, adopt Resolution Number 2023-151, authorizing opening a line of credit with Old National Bank for a security bond for the Moraine Edition Housing Trust Project. 8.9, adopt Resolution Number 2023-153, approving the conditional use permit to operate an organics recycling facility and preliminary plat of Malkerson Edition. 8.10, adopt Resolution Number 2023-154, approving the solid waste license and conditions for the Shakopee Midwakan and Sioux Community S M S C to operate an organics recycling facility in Section 16 of Louisville Township. 8.11, adopt Resolution Number 2023-155, awarding a contract to J L Tyce Inc. Incorporated for the County Highway 16 and Fuller Street Traffic Signal Project in the city of Shakopee. 8.12, adopt Resolution Number 2023-156, authorizing the application for and acceptance of grant funding for an outdoor fitness court in partnership with the city of Shakopee. 8.13, adopt Resolution Number 2023-159, authorizing the submittal of capital bonding request to the Minnesota Department of Management and Budget. 8.14, adopt Resolution Number 2023-161, amending the 2023 budget for utilization of American Rescue Plan Act funds and authorizing entering into a contract with Allos Ministries for the purchase of four housing units to support families experiencing homelessness. 8.15, approve the one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for Scott County Carver Thresher's Association in St. Lawrence Township. 8.16, approve two one-to-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor licenses for the Scott County Agricultural Society doing business as Scott County Fair in St. Lawrence Township. 8.17, approve the renewal application for 3.2% malt liquor license for J C I Shakopee in Louisville Township for 2023. 8.18, approve the one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Church of St. Patrick located in Cedar Lake Township. 8.19, approve payroll processing of payroll personnel actions. And 8.20, approve record of disbursements and approve claims. Those are the 20 items on consent, and you would like to have pulled for a separate motion or for discussion?
I would like to have a couple of comments. I don't need to pull anything. I want to really recognize the fact that the S M S C has made a decision to move the organics recycling facility. That's probably one of the, as a city, previous city council member, was one of the areas that I got a lot of calls on for, for odors and things, and I, I appreciate the technology that they're putting into this new facility to, to reduce and eliminate those, those odors and other things, and quicken the, quicken the organics recycling. I also want to thank Lisa Brodsky for looking at the grand opportunity for the city of Shakopee for their outdoor fitness court on E 12. Scenic Heights was really identified as a park that should be set aside for fitness and, and edible gardens, so that's a great partnership that we're working on. So I think that's, that's all I have today.
That's what you have, any others?
But I, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second, one discussion. I'm going to ask for a separate vote on 8.7, because I sit on that board.
Oh, good, because that's the one I was going to talk about.
Oh, okay, is that right? Okay. So with that, we have a motion for the 19 of those 20 items. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Weckman-Brecke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf? Commissioner Beard?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
The ayes have it. Thank you, and with that, I'd look for a motion for the 8.7.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Obviously, on consent agenda, there were a lot of very important items that we could have spent hours talking about and, and approved, including the ORF. Thanks, friends. But though, many of those items have been talked about in other venues, at Planning Commission, other places. I just wanted to call attention to 8.7, because it's probably some of the first calls I received as a commissioner was about lighting on rural intersections, and it's been a process, because we did a study, we applied for money, and, and this is huge. This is going to be huge to a lot of those folks, if you see on that map how many intersections that we're going to light, and most of those calls came from senior citizens and folks who just felt like it was dangerous driving home. home. So I'm just really happy to see that happen and glad that I was able to make that motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we will call the roll.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Weckman-Brackey?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Epstein?
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Okay, that's a 4-0-1 vote. So thank you very much. That is the consent agenda. So we're going to be moving to number nine, and that is to receive an informational update on the 2023 Renaissance Festival season. I see Mr. Brad Davis coming to the podium to talk about that. A few of us, maybe all of us, have received calls and emails on this. And so it's just been a couple of months since we've heard something and just want to see where we're at with this, if there's any progress in the transportation and parking area. So we're going to zero in on something here.
Where we're at, and I've got a couple of handouts, and that's why I'm using the document camera, just to show you a couple of different images as we go through this here. But I do want to let the board know that Scott County staff has approved the operational plans for the 2023 festival season. We received those operational plans on time. We got them back on June 1, and it's taken staff a little bit of time to work through different comments, make sure that we're coordinating our comments with some other stakeholders that are shown here on the screen. But this approval includes the parking plan, the transit plan, the traffic control and signage plan, the disaster and emergency response plan, the first aid station plan, the communications plan, and the monitoring plan. So all those plans were assembled in a single document called the Traffic Management Plan, and that's what we received on back in early June, went through the comments, and have approved them. Again, these approvals came after considerable review and consultation with some key stakeholders, including Louisville Township, MinDOT, the city of Shakopee. And again, on the screen is a list of about 40 people that were on the Transportation Management Group committee that met over the course of April and May to really work on these plans and then comment on them. So I'll just give you a brief highlight, kind of key components of each of those plans here with my remaining time. The parking plan. This is just one of the site plans in the document showing the different parking areas. So the, this season's parking plan was prepared by Interstate Parking Company. If you recall, that's a professional parking firm that's under contract with MidAmerica for the next five years to plan and execute the onsite parking operations for the season. IPC, the International Parking Company, will be the onsite coordinator and responsible for all event parking operations. They're also going to be responsible with coordinating the traffic flows of the buses and the rideshare operators that will be coming on and off the site each event day. They're also responsible for managing the pre-programmed dynamic messaging signage that will be on a lot of the roadways coming into the site and making sure that they communicate and execute real-time changes throughout the event day. IPC will staff each event day with approximately 80 parking attendants or cashiers. So it's going to be a lot of staff that IPC is committed to being out onsite to do the cashiering, do the directional flagging, do everything it takes to park vehicles at an event. They will validate the daily onsite parking passes and confirm that those passes are legitimate. They'll tabulate the daily parking totals. So it's the King's Lot and the Queen's Lot. These lots here are really going to be the primary focus for parking vehicles. The Green Ferry Lot, which is located right here on the diagram, that's really going to be a relief valve. If there is congestion that is starting to occur for any particular reason on 145th, then the Green Ferry Lot will be used to alleviate that until that congestion is back to normal. So it's not going to be one of their primary parking lots. It's really going to be that relief valve. So those are some of the key points, I think, for the parking plan for this season. I can transition to the next plan or take any questions you might have on the parking plan.
Any questions on the parking?
Segment.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
So the transit plan was prepared by SRF, and transit service for the 2023 season will be provided by Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, or MBTA, and a joint partnership between the Richfield Bus Company and Lorenz Bus Services. So those two private bus companies agree jointly to provide service to their event. MBTA will provide bus service from Eagle Creek Park and Ride Lot, the South Bridge Park and Ride Lot, the Burnsville Transit Station, and in any overflow situations, the Heart of the City Park and Ride in Burnsville. So this map here shows some of those park and ride locations with the number of spaces that are available for the event days. The Richfield and Lorenz will provide bus service from Canterbury Park. So MidAmerica and Canterbury Park have a signed agreement for up to 1,500 spaces that patrons can use and park at Canterbury and then get direct bus service on a Richfield or Lorenz bus line. MidAmerica has contracts also with the Scott County Fairgrounds to utilize that during the last few weekends of the event when they're anticipating most of their customers. The idea with the Scott County Fairgrounds is to peel off anyone that might be traveling from the south and know that they could park there and catch a bus. The other use of the fairgrounds is at times, at those times, if the onsite parking is full and they've reached their 7,000 capacity, patrons will then be directed to immediately get back on 169 and head down to the fairgrounds to catch a bus back. Some other key points to the transit plan. Patrons wanting to take the transit service will not be assigned a specific park and ride lot. I know that was a lot of discussion, but what they are proposing to do is, at the time of purchasing a ticket, or, excuse, at the time of purchasing a ticket, they will indicate whether they're going to also be purchasing an onsite parking pass or if they're going to be going to a park and ride, and they will indicate then in the ticketing system which park and ride lot they think they will go to the day that they are attending. So it's not obligating them to it, but they will indicate which specific park and ride lot they plan to go to. MidAmerica will then use that information to predict which park and ride lots appear to have most of their patrons planning to go to so they can monitor the capacity. They will then have a staff person at each park and ride lot onsite during the entire festival day to monitor capacity, be prepared to communicate to, back to the IPC when parking lots are reaching capacity. Their plan is also to text and email the ticket holder if they are starting to sense that a park and ride lot is reaching capacity and it was one that they had indicated preference. They will then get a text and indicate that they may want to look at a second option for their park and ride lot. So those are all the ways that they are proposing this season to manage capacity at the different park and ride lots. All transit and park and ride information will be posted on their website. They have updated their web pages to show the changes that are occurring with the need for parking passes. They've got some transit information, but I'm told that a full website redesign with all the changes coming up and much more prominence on the parking and transit will go live this week. So look for a new website this week on the Renaissance Festival. That's some of the key points from the transit plan. I'll transition to the traffic control unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
The 2023 Traffic Control Plan was prepared by SRF. There'll be a mix of static and dynamic messaging signs along all the major travel routes coming into the festival to provide directions to park and ride lots or the festival site itself. This diagram shows in all the black boxes where those, what those, where those signs will be located and what the messages will be on the signs. IPC staff will monitor real-time traffic using MinDOT cameras where they're available along these routes, drones, and IPC is committed to having observers driving these routes during the event days so they're not just relying on information coming into them. They'll be out themselves driving these routes to observe any congestion issues.
I have a question.
Yeah. Commissioner Brennan?
Was there any 169 messaging boards that are being utilized?
There will be. Yep. I think they're located here with these red dots, I think, if I remember my legend. But there will be dynamic signage, and I think they'll be using the one before you cross the river up in Bloomington as well.
Did they have some of those last year too, Brad?
I believe they did, Commissioner. I don't know exactly.
Did that was effective or?
We don't think it was too effective because there wasn't, appeared to be, real-time coordination happening. But they are committed to that this festival season.
Got it. Thank you.
Like last year, Louisville Road from 147th Street to County Road 78 will be closed to general traffic and only open to local businesses or residential traffic that need to access that segment of Louisville Road, and also buses and emergency vehicles. So buses will continue to use that Louisville Road as a quick way to get down to the site.
Mr. Chair, question?
Sheriff's deputies will be stationed at those closures to ensure that the general public is not utilizing them, but local businesses are.
Commissioner Brennan?
Yeah. Any talk about how to best coordinate for the local businesses? Because I think we ran into that a little bit last year with those closures, about people going to the bowling alley, to Lionel's, to any place like that. Any further talk about that?
I know that the sheriff deputies talk about it and try to make sure that whoever is stationed that day is fully aware that there are local traffic that would be utilizing that. So I'm hoping that there'll be daily briefings to just keep that staff fully aware of that situation. Beyond that, I haven't heard any other type of coordination efforts.
That would be a great thing to have on our to-do list because I think that's really important and those businesses probably deserve that.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner. If and when onsite parking reaches its maximum of 7,000 vehicles, signage and protocols are in place to redirect traffic to the fairgrounds, as I mentioned. If there is an incident on US Highway 169 or if a train is blocking both site entrances, the plan identifies an alternate route, which is County Road 69, our old Brickyard Road, down to County Road 14. So it's that similar alternate route that was in place last year. This alternate route is not expected to be put into place or put into action, given the maximum number of vehicles that are allowed to drive to the site to park and the increased focus on transit. Staff is hopeful that the alternate route will never be deployed for action, but it is in the plan for those scenarios so that everyone knows what the plan is. That's some of the key points from the Traffic Control Plan. The 2023 emergency, disaster and emergency response and first aid station plans were prepared by SRF and MidAmerica Festivals with consultation with the County Sheriff's Office and the Shakopee Fire Department. The plan here is represented on this diagram, shows the emergency access routes. The primary emergency access route will be off of 41 into the site from the north, and then the alternate is shown on the south side. The plan identifies procedures and protocols for emergency response. It identifies the staffing levels and procedures at the first aid station. It also establishes an incident command structure for emergencies. The fire chief and our emergency management director have signed off and approved those plans for this year. So they also included a communications plan that was prepared by SRF and MidAmerica Festival staff. So that part of the plan covers how MidAmerica will use social media and their website to communicate alerts, notifications, and information on operational changes before and during the season. It also covers the ticketing process, the parking passes, the transit ridership communication procedures and protocols. Just, it includes the types of messages that they're going to post in these different formats. They have a matrix of if certain events occur, these are the communications that we're going to send out, and just a lot of that pre-planning that has gone into their communications plan. Finally, the 2023 Monitoring Implementation Plan was prepared by SRF. This covers responsibilities for data collection to monitor CUP compliance. It will include after-action reports and in-person meetings, week to week, during and after the festival. So we are looking for a midweek kind of check-in after each weekend to monitor how things are going and be able to then communicate any needs for the upcoming week, weekend, excuse me. There's protocols for county and township observers. I think there will be designated locations and designated parking passes for county and township staff that want to go in and observe how things are going around and inside the festival during the event days. And then they also include a matrix of mitigation. If certain events happen, here's our mitigation plan. Here's the roles and responsibilities to execute that plan. So with that, these operational plans have been approved, and staff has notified MidAmerica of other information to provide the county over the next coming weeks as they gear up for the 2023 season, which starts in late August. That includes information in the annual checklist. That's always been information that we've needed. We've stipulated in the CUP that we need that information by July 1. Probably some of the notable items is the annual contract with the sheriff's office to provide staff and vehicles for traffic control. I'm told that that agreement has been between both parties and is near completion and will probably land on one of your agendas soon. Also, updated insurance certificates, naming not only Scott County but also Louisville Township as certificate holders. That was a new stipulation in the CUP, and we'll need to see that. And then their medical service contract with their ambulance providers. We also need to see a copy of a signed and executed road maintenance agreement between MidAmerica and Louisville Township that is also in the works. The town board has approved that agreement but has not yet signed and executed it or posted any financial obligation with that agreement. So that is certainly something we're going to need to see. That's important, too, because under the CUP, that maintenance agreement needs to be signed and sealed and executed before they can bring up to 7,000 vehicles, and we've reminded MidAmerica of that. And then finally, under the CUP, they will need to post a $5,000 escrow with the county to cover staff costs associated with permit compliance, and they are in agreement, and we'll be posting that in the next couple of weeks. So that concludes my informational update. I can take any questions.
Hey, Brad, so the people at the fairgrounds, which way would they go to get there? And this might be a dumb question. Would they go down 169 or would they cut back down through 41 or something?
I believe the plan is to continue down 169 to the 282 stoplight.
And the 41 in Carver area of Chaska, is that going to be done by then? Or is there, is that all torn up or?
I think the downtown area will continue to be torn up. I think there will be detours on both of the residential streets paralleling that segment of Main Street, but I don't think MinDOT wants to encourage a lot of traffic going down there. And I believe that they're going to have some signage encouraging Renaissance Festival traffic to take 101 down across the river. If they're traveling 212, I think the messaging will be to take 101, get down to Shakopee, and then onto 169.
Okay. It almost sounds like there might be a little mess down there. Is that possible?
In downtown Chaska?
Yeah, well, the whole area. I don't know. It's just a lot of people coming in. If there's one less road, I, that's just my thinking. Anyhow, any other questions?
I'm going to have a few comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks, Brad. First of all, I know this has spent a lot of time, and I have a lift for you and your staff. Also, though, for township, for fire department, for all kinds of folks who've been involved. So I think it's just really great that everybody is working together to try and make this work, and I appreciate that time and attention. So you talked about the weekly check-ins. You know, if we get to that point, what is, and this is because it's a question I get asked, what's the compliance vehicle if, you know, Wednesday after second week, you, the county, we feel that something's not being complied with? What happens then?
Yep. A couple of things. We did build into the permit that situation. If you recall, there was another condition that we added to the permit that the county board can unilaterally decrease the number of onsite parking vouchers if there is an issue. So that would be one recourse, is that we would have to find the next agenda where we could get on the board and ask for that decrease.
Or a special meeting.
Or a special meeting, yeah. That would be one recourse. The second recourse is if we don't need to act that fast, but still need to address the issue after the season, then we are in a non-compliance situation like we were a year ago. And we would go through the process of informing the applicant that they're not in compliance and go through that public hearing process. That would be the recourse towards, back to that revocation of the permit. Those are the two kind of immediate remedies that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Just a good reminder, I think, for everybody. Any thoughts by the working group of having an opportunity for non-Renaissance Festival staff, of course, to view the roads and parking lot prior to opening day, to just see the improvements, check on the improvements? Again, kind of a compliance issue, that type of thing?
Yeah, we can certainly coordinate that. If there's interest in setting up a time to invite stakeholders from the township, the county, to go and do a site tour, we could look at arranging that.
I think that might be a great idea. You know, I figured we shouldn't just trespass.
Yep. I can start working and coordinating that.
That'd be great. Thank you. And I just want to put on the record, because I've been contacted by people who have a connection to the Renaissance vendors, other folks, about issues they have with the Renaissance that aren't related to what's in our purview, things like contracts and things like that. So I just want to say publicly, the only reason we're really involved in this is because of the traffic issues and the impacts on our roads and the citizens surrounding. It's not our purview to run their business, to have them comply with those types of things. So just want to get that, just a reminder to folks on that, and that we usually try not to get this involved with a business. But it's, in this case, we just needed to because of those pressures on those roads around there. So vendors, and then the website, you know, I think a lot of us have been following that, really happy to hear that there's going to be some changes soon, and we hope to see those soon. Because right now, you know, every now and then I go on there and look, but right now I don't see that information that has been communicated as part of the plan. So hopefully, we'll see those new websites soon. Might be great, Brad, when you hear that it's up and running, to just give us a quick email, and we can help others understand that that's up and running then, too. So I think those are my comments. I'm just going to say thanks again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're not in charge of how they make the corn and the turkey legs and the port-a-potties, all that.
Not at all.
That's right. Good. Thank you. Anything else, Brad?
No.
Questions, comments? Commissioner Ulrich, is there?
Well, I have no comments.
Yeah, go ahead. Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, then with that, we're going to go see Kate Sylachik is here, and she's going to conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 2023-143, adopting Solid Waste Management Ordinance Number 2 and rescinding Resolution Number 2018-046.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Kate Sylachik. I'm with the Environmental Services Department. And today, we're requesting that you conduct a public hearing and approve the solid waste ordinance amendments. And I have a brief presentation that might answer any questions on those amendments. So I'll just go ahead and get started. So the solid waste ordinance was established in 1976. I believe it was one of the first county ordinances. And what it does is it regulates how, who and how people regulate or manage solid waste and recycling here in Scott County. So the purpose of our amendments here today, one, is we need to implement the strategies in the solid waste management plan. And I have future slides on those strategies in the plan. And I'll go through those, but just as a brief reminder, the plan, the solid waste management plan was approved in 2018. We were required to select strategies from the state metro solid waste plan. And the solid waste advisory committee and the environmental services staff selected the strategies that we thought were the best fit for Scott County. They would increase recycling and reduce contamination. And then the other thing that came from that solid waste management plan when we were going through the planning process is our philosophy was that we felt outreach and education were the first best step. And then we would move to incentives, so we have our recycling grants. And then last was tools for enforcement, which is putting these requirements into our ordinance. So that's why we're coming here. It's taken us a while, because we had this phased approach. The second reason for the amendment is to be consistent with state rules. The last time the ordinance was gone through thoroughly for updates was 1999. So we spent a lot of time making sure that we were meeting state statute. And then actually, we went through and took out any redundancies. We felt we really didn't need to restate what was in statute in the ordinance. That's not the best use of an ordinance. And then third was clarification of existing language. So through the years, we've been taking notes when staff, the public, or a hauler or facility would say to us, you know, this doesn't really make sense, or this process has burdened some, can we improve it? So we would take notes, and we made some changes, and those were our proposed amendments for today. So progress on those strategies, a little bit about those strategies. Like I said, counties had to select strategies from the metro plan, kind of like an à la carte. And we had to pick a certain number from these different areas in the plan in order for the MPCA to approve the county plan. We have a lot of really good strategies in our plan that we're actively implementing right now. We've made a lot of progress through collaboration and those incentives, those grants. But there were three strategies in the plan that are called out that need to go into the ordinance. So I will go through those. So on the screen here, number one, collector cycles and trash on the same day by 2020. Now, this is a pretty easy one, because most haulers already do this. But if they are not, they are going to have to now do this so that their customers aren't confused on what day they're supposed to roll out their recycling. Number two, down there on the bottom, solid waste haulers have to offer resident recycling, their residential customers an organic collection program, which is either curbside collection, they have to go to the house and pick it up, or they have to have a drop-off available to their customer within 10 miles. Now, most of our haulers are already in compliance with this because our haulers, our facilities, and our cities have already stepped up and built collection sites. So that goes back to that philosophy that really works, the outreach, the collaboration, letting them know there's a need, and then providing that incentive from grant funds to set those up, and those have been quite successful. So that one, we've made good progress on already. Then the last one, large commercial, let me see here. Large commercial organic generators must collect organic materials by 2022. So a large generator is a business that generates more than one ton of mixed municipal solid waste a week, and they generate organics in the back of the house. So this is your restaurant or a grocery store, someone who's generating a lot of organics. So since 2018, we have been working with the businesses. We've been offering a nonprofit, Minnesota Waste Wise, to go out into businesses and start a recycling program, an organic collection with them. Shows them how to do it, what's the benefit, how they can save money. And businesses have been getting on board with this and starting these programs, including organic collection. We also offer them our business recycling grant, so they have funds to buy the bins, to buy the sorting table, to take some of that burden off of them. And again, it gets them to invest into it and buy into it. We also have Second Harvest, which is another partner that's going out to businesses like Morbiere Retail, trying to get those packaged items that they're going to throw away and give those to someone, get those in the hands of someone who needs them instead of landfilling them. So we've made a lot of progress through outreach and incentives on this third strategy, and that's going to continue to be our approach to doing that instead of going to the ordinance for enforcement as that first, you know, get to know them with an ordinance. That's not how we're going to approach this. We have some other tools we're going to do first. So with that, if we are making such good progress, then what's the need of the ordinance? And it's really simple. One is to fulfill what we are required to do in our solid waste plan. It establishes a fair and predictable, so there's some businesses that have invested in this because they thought this rule was coming. And now we have to make a fair playground for all of them, that you all have to do this. And then third, if we should have to deal with someone who's not in compliance, we do need some teeth behind it by having it as an ordinance requirement. Some other significant amendments that I want to point out that might be of interest to you. 4.6, the bond requirements. We have changed the language so that we are breaking the facilities down by size. And then it states in the ordinance how you can determine the bond. This is coming from some small facilities that say it's kind of a burden to have to go through this board process when I'm actually a little one. So now they can calculate it out, and you'd be broken down into three areas. So if your bond would be under 10,000, you wouldn't need a bond. You don't need to come to the board. If it's 10,000 to 100,000, the environmental services department can approve that bond and that license. And anything over 100,000 needs to go to the board for the bond and the approval of the license. And then, of course, we would bring anything to you that we think you might find interesting or controversial, such as the ORF, the SMSC ORF, didn't require a bond. But that's a pretty big deal that we know that you would want to be involved in, so we would bring those forward. One of the other changes, it's an addition, it's 4.10, Acceptance of Waste for Disposal and Processing. So we added language that land disposal and processing facilities must ensure that they have capacity to accept Scott County waste. The intention of this is to prevent a facility from taking waste from other counties and other facilities than their capacity. Scott County shows up with their waste, and they say, "I'm sorry, I can't take your waste." Scott County then needs to find another facility farther away, driving up the cost of transportation. So now they need to consider Scott County waste when they're dealing with other customers to make sure that Scott County is taken care of, too. 5.04 and 6.03, Facility Reporting Requirements. We are asking for changes in reporting at the facilities, which doesn't seem to some maybe as significant, but it is to us. Because what we're asking, we would like to improve our outreach with haulers on how to do a better job of proper disposal and securing their loads. So we're asking these facilities that they arrive to to document issues that are going on, notify us, and then we would like to reach out to those haulers on improving on proper disposal. And then Section 13, as fees established, this really isn't a...
Hey, can I just ask a question on 4.10, I think? No, 5.04, since we're on it. And I apologize if I don't understand, and you said this right, but why are we taking out the requirement that they'd have to clean up wind-blown materials? On D, it says we're striking out, "At the conclusion of each day of operation, all wind-blown material resulting from the operation shall be collected and returned to the area."
Let me get to that. I'm sorry, can you... 5.04, what?
D.
Oh.
Is it maybe handled somewhere else?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay.
So in the one, in their state permit, it lists the timeframe that they have to clean up. And then what we will do is we will write that as a condition into each license, because each facility might have a different, some might be daily, some might be weekly, some might... So that's why we struck it out of there.
Great. Just wanted to make sure, because that would be something that people who live in those areas want to know why. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so the fees established, what we did there, statute says that counties can collect a fee on MSW, mixed solid waste and a construction demo. So, and then we kind of had that we are going to do that, and here is the amount, and here's how we're going to collect it. And what we did is we struck out the amount and how we're going to collect it, because if you have the amount in the ordinance, then that's how it is permanently in time until we amend it. What we did is we struck that out, and we put, what we'll do is we'll handle the fees in the fee schedule so that you can see it annually instead of it's a fixed amount in an ordinance. So you'll see some language struck out in there. And then we did add another section in fees that says that the board will be establishing fees for waste. We could do it in the fee schedule, but it also just says the board's established. So maybe you'll decide you want to do it through an agreement, should an MSW facility apply here at Scott County to open up a site. So those are the four significant ones that I wanted to point out. We did want to, you know, the changes that we made, we wanted them to have purpose and value. So we did ask our solid waste advisory committee to take a look at it, but they've known. They knew that in the plan that there were ordinance changes that needed to be made. So they're aware of it. We did give them in March a 30-day opportunity to review it. And the folks in the SWAC are three cities, Elko, New Market, New Prague, and Jordan, one township, Louisville, industry reps, which is SMSC ORF, Buckingham, SCT, and Demcon, two citizens, and one planning commission. So we felt like we had a pretty good group of people looking this over. And then in March, we sent it out to all the stakeholders, which is every city, all the haulers and facilities that work in Scott County, and gave them a 30-day review period. And then, of course, we did follow the public hearing laws that it went out in the paper. We did receive some comments, phone calls and emails, very informal, just, you know, is it going to be an inch or three quarters? What does this mean? There were brief phone calls, we documented, but it was nothing significant or anyone asking us to change any language. I would like to thank Mark Paul, if he was not here, but he is our solid waste advisory chair, and he spent a significant amount of time looking at this ordinance closely, calling out any areas that he thought might be confusing for industry or maybe for staff if we ever got asked what we meant by something. And then, of course, Nick Raischus, he leads our solid waste program, and he did a lot of the legwork, tracking down statutes and exactly repercussions of any language change. And then Pete Schmidt, he's not here with us today. After we put the amendments out to the public for the public notice, we did see some minor clarifications in the language that we needed to make. And that is in the ordinance strikeout, the one that you have in your packet. It has all of the changes that we needed to make. So lastly, before I go to any questions, I just wanted to let the board know that the MPCA has put their next metro solid waste plan out for public notice. People are reviewing it right now. Once that's approved, the counties then have nine months to update their plans. And then, of course, depending on what goes in our plan, we might be making ordinance changes again. But I just wanted to let everyone know if anyone has a concern about a solid waste strategy or one of these... about a solid waste strategy or one of these ordinance, we might be having, well, we will be having these discussions again soon on improvements. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? With that, I would look for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
There's a motion to open. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Beer. Any discussion? Michelle, please take the roll.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Wegman-Brecky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is open, so if anyone would like to speak on this subject or matter or topic, come on up. These way back row there is, no? Side, no?
Brad, do you want to talk?
Nobody, nobody, nobody? One more time?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing.
There's a motion to close that public hearing. Is there a second? And there's a second by Commissioner Brennan. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's take the roll.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Wegman-Brecky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Commissioner Ulrich.
Okay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is closed, so, and I don't believe we're taking action today.
We are.
We're just giving the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt solid waste management ordinance number two and rescind Resolution Number 2018-046.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, call the roll.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Wegman-Brecky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Okay, the eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Zalajic. Okay, we're going to, with committee reports and commissioner updates, we're a little late, we've got a couple long workshop items today, so we'll hand those in, unless there's some, I see a sour face over here. One item?
No.
None? Okay, okay, good, thank you. We'll hand those in. With that, we'll go with the county administrator update.
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Chair.
Nothing to add? Is there any reason to attorney-client privilege today?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, there is not.
There is not? Okay, we are going to adjourn next, but we have the one watershed, one planned organizational structure options, and the regional trail planning workshop next. With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. There's a motion. Commissioner Beer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion? Please.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Wegman-Brecky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye.
Okay, the eyes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you.